Morning. It's 8:30, and I'm going to call the Clay County Board of Commissioners meeting for September 10th, 2024 to order. First thing on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
I'll have for motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Have motion to second. Any discussion? If not all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Next, we have citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens present who want to address any issue that's not on today's agenda? Steve, do we have anybody remote?
We do not, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Next, the approval of payment of bills and vouchers.
Moment, confirm.
I'll second the motion.
Have motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Before we go further in the agenda, just want to welcome Commissioner Gross back. We've been like a ship without a rudder here for a few weeks, and it's good to have you back with us, Frank.
Thank you.
Coming up, we have requests for approval of Housing and Redevelopment Authority, HRA of Clay County. I'm sorry. Or yes, that is. I've got my packet mixed up. Going up, ladies. Have Don Bacon and Dara Lee with Clay County HRA.
Good morning, Chair, Commissioners. I'm sure it feels like you just saw us a little bit ago, and so we are coming back with our actual request for consent to the Housing and Redevelopment Authority levy for 2025 that was approved by the Clay County HRA Board of Commissioners in August. If you'll recollect, at our conversation at the joint meeting, we discussed that the Housing Authority Board had determined a minimum amount for ongoing operations to be $350,000. Given concerns expressed, we went back and sharpened some more pencils and dug a little deeper and have reduced that request to $300,000 along with the request for consent to repurpose some of the state affordable housing aid that was awarded to Clay County HRA through an RFP process last year. We have had savings on that primarily due to a reduction in costs on the anticipated cost to re-roof Agassi Apartments in Yulin, Minnesota, for two reasons. I had budgeted conservatively, concerned about ongoing inflation in that area, and those costs had stabilized. And then our contractor accidentally put down, put on one level lower shingle quality, and so we received a 10% reduction in costs due to that. So we are requesting those two items. As you will note, the Housing Authority has already undertaken a number of measures to try to increase revenues as well as decrease costs. We've reduced our workforce through attrition by approximately 12%. We have worked on eliminating programs that were unable to be self-sustaining over the long term. We have consolidated programs to make them more efficient. We have taken over the management of the Moorhead Public Housing Agency, which generates revenue of approximately $800,000 per year, although there are, of course, accompanying costs associated with that. And we are looking at long-term sustainability of a few of the properties by trying to adjust the type of subsidy that is provided in those units in both our Yulin development, and then we are taking a look at the Hoagie Estates Development Subsidy in Dilworth. So I am happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding this request for consent.
Questions. Mr. Mojo.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and the recap, both of you. I want to go a little bit back to our discussion that we had at our work session about this billion historic housing funding that was signed into law a year ago, and the gates that may be in place to slow the trickle to agencies. From that, had you identified any funds that you would be allocated and to, if, have they come in?
As we discussed before, for the Relief for Affordable Housing Fund, we have received an allocation of $115,600 to be applied towards Hoagie Estates. Sharp View Apartments in Moorhead, Minnesota, has been awarded $1.4 million. We have, the RFP is anticipated to be released in November, but we have been designated to receive over $860,000 through the Bring It Home Minnesota Rental Assistance Program. As you know, for Clay County, those state affordable housing aid, which was part of that, have been awarded for '23, '24, and '25, and the rest is still to come. There have been some homeowner options released that is typically funneled through the private banks in the form of low-interest loans to low-income populations.
So in terms of those, have you been given any inclination as to when they'll come in?
I am unable to give you an answer. No, I don't know, except for the 800 and some thousand, which we anticipate hopefully is operational by next late spring, early summer.
Is that typical for funds to be allocated and then 24 months later come in?
Depending upon the funding source, I would say it typically takes six months to 18 months on average.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Mr. Chair, are there two requests here? One is the 300, and the other one is the, those other funds?
Commissioner Campbell, yes, that is correct. Whether or not it needs formal commission approval to reallocate, I don't know, but I think-
It does. As a matter of fact, it has to be another RFP, if my understanding is correct.
I think, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Campbell, I think we're talking about two things. You're talking about the additional SAHA 2025 numbers-
Yes.
And you're talking about reallocating the 2024.
Yeah. I'm talking about things that have already been awarded to the HRA.
Oh, okay. And they weren't used in 2024, so you want to use them in 2025? Is that-
Correct. We had savings that came out of our budget for the '23 and '24 funds, and the other portion of that is that the legislature retroactively changed the uses for the 2024 funds and expanded those eligible uses. So there was a change legislatively as well as cost savings.
So that's that $40,000 she was talking about, $40,140, or $40,414.
Is that an action that we need to take as a board, or is it internal?
I think you, as a board, you delegated those funds for usage based on the RFP. I think that Ms. Lee and Ms. Bacon are bringing it forward to show the board that there were some additional dollars that were saved-
Yeah.
And that they would look to you to approve their continuing to utilize those funds for other purposes. So, yes.
So we're looking at two separate motions here.
I think there's just one. Maybe I'm wrong. The levy, unless we're, the other part, do we need the-
But, I mean, it depends on, from a cleanup standpoint. I mean, you've already made the allocation of the funding, and so-
It took you, whatever.
So if I can, so on the original allocation of the funding, it was meant to be used in 2024.
That-
And so now it's my understanding that because of other savings, they didn't need to use all that money in 2024. Is that a my-
Commissioner Campbell, if I may, no, there was no timeframe. I believe it was up to four years, actually, to use the funds. It's just that we're changing the use of funds, and I would defer to the county attorney and county administrator whether that requires formal action. Those funds have been awarded through an RFP process to Clay County HRA.
Well, then maybe we should just get that straightened out and give our attorney or whatever time to review that. I think the thing that we're under critical timeframe on is the part where it deals with the levy. Outside of the levy, whether we do an extension or modify the previous actions, isn't time restricted like what we have to do today.
No, but it did impact our board's decision to be able to reduce that levy request from 350 down to 300,000. I just would like to point out that our overall budget increase, we were able to keep it a 3.6% increase across the board for our budget, which I believe is less than other government entities. I was told that on average across Minnesota, it was at 8%, and we were only able to keep it at that level by asking for these reallocations. I took the conservative approach and put it in here.
I'm not suggesting that we would not reapprove the use component of what's already been dedicated to your use, but just from the standpoint of making sure that we've done it the correct way. I'm not for one minute suggesting that we do the 300,000 today, and then, oh, next week, we're sorry, Dara, you're not going to get the other money. That's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about just making sure that we follow the proper protocol in how we previously allocated that money.
And I do think, Commissioner Campbell, Mr. Chair, it would be cleaner just to have a vote on both. I think that would be better. So I don't know if the board wants to handle both those today or not, but it would be cleaner just to make sure that's clear how that money is being allocated.
And when you say both, this would not be one motion, it would be two?
Oh, we need two.
Two.
And the $68,000 SAHA funds were advertised in the agenda packet, so we could take action on it today. Thank you.
Well, for sure, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the, for them to collect a special benefit tax of $300,000.
We have a second. Take a discussion. I'm going to second that motion. Discussion.
Well, yeah, I'll just make some comments. You know, I look at homelessness, and I look at the work that they do and what I've learned over the last three, four, or five months, and how the effect of COVID, how the effect of the state having a moratorium on leases, you know, affected, totally wiped out their reserves over the last number of years. I don't quite understand why we wouldn't, as we have, you know, she's gone in deep detail the use of the money, how they're doing it. I think we have to have a place to help them succeed, and if they don't have any reserves, what, you know, where are they going to go from here? We need to be able to leverage them so that they succeed to get these properties. They've already talked about during our work group, how they're renovating Hoagie, how they've already redone the work up in Yulin, so that people that did get evicted and destroyed the properties, they got them back in order so that they can get rent on the books again. And that's my side of it. I just, I think we need to put them in a position to succeed, and I hope they do, and we won't, down the road, you know, if they get these other grants and whatnot, you know, they won't be in this position, but I, everybody needs a little something to back themselves on, so.
You know, my observation, there is some discomfort with the commission, throughout the commission, with some of the stuff we find out late. And even in your presentation, we get the income of what Moorhead's public housing produces, but we're given no idea what the expenses are going to be. And a lot of that, particularly the high-rise, are of concern. And if the city of Moorhead, it is a Moorhead issue, and if the city of Moorhead wants to fund and maintain those premises, that's fine. I don't know if we need to assume their liabilities. And I think there's some general concern that it's not what we're hearing, it's what we don't hear, and we don't hear it until later. So there is discomfort with this.
Chair, Ambigur, if I can clarify that?
Sure.
We have assumed no liabilities for the Moorhead Public Housing Agency on the properties that they are, that they own, and so we are happy to share at any point in time if we are proposing that that would change. Right now, we are simply managing the properties, and the only expenses associated with that to the Housing Authority, the Clay County Housing Authority, are staffing and administrative expenses.
Dara, you did have it in your goals, though.
Yes, it is.
Take it over.
It's a five-year process, and we will certainly keep you informed along that way. Our goal is to have the buildings renovated prior to that and to have them taken out of the traditional public housing realm and repurposed so that they are income generating prior to any acquisition of those properties. So we shall do our best to keep you informed for every step along the way, but at this point in time, there is no ownership of those properties, nor is there any financial liability on behalf of the Clay County HRA.
I just want to comment, and Commissioner Kravonoff, I appreciate your comments. You know, and you mentioned the homelessness and all those issues that go on, and part of my argument that I always make is, you know, to put that, the solution to all that on counties and on property tax, I think is wrong. I think the appropriate entities who should be stepping up are the states, because all of a sudden, if you start putting it down on individual counties, if one county starts to do something, to really do some things, then the availability of that is going to come from other counties, people from other counties are going to come there. You've got to have a solution that's going to work no matter what county you're in, and the funding mechanism has to come from what county you're in, and not to use the most regressive form of tax that you can have to solve that problem. That's all I'm talking about. I'm not one bit, I agree that we have issues with housing, and especially affordable housing, and homelessness. It's just that everybody seems to look at property tax as the last answer, and it should be the absolute last answer. I'll support this motion.
Further discussion. Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. I just want to talk a little bit about the fact that we have, you heard our suggestion about having biannual meetings so that we could be updated, meet with your board, ask questions about projects, or be more in the loop, so I really do appreciate that. And two, we're all dealing with five-year plans and what looks best and how things can change, and certainly, we're very well aware about dealing with older buildings, particularly the one to the south of this building. We are doing our best to renovate that, but we also realize that as buildings age, the big-ticket items really linger out there, and so that's where our concerns about the high-rise may be. Certainly, what I really appreciated about the HRA is you're doing work in all corners of the county, and I think that's really important to note. I think the homework starts at home piece is really important, and our community would really rally around knowing what that is, and so kudos there. My huge frustration is really more targeted towards state-designated funding and how it really forces you to just be in this pattern of unknown, and so you have programs and projects and needs that you're planning for, just like you're planning with your five-year plan, on how to mitigate that with this magical billion dollars in housing funds, which is fantastic if it's getting to the local entities that need it. So just to have this bureaucratic red tape, if you will, to actually access the funds is really a disservice to the agencies that do the work. I will say, in regards to your request, it is, being fiscally conservative, I will say, in regards to what other entities throughout the state are doing, I like that you have been cautious and came back with an additional fund, you know, a number for us, so I appreciate that. I appreciate that you're looking at ways to save money within the projects that you are doing. I think that we can continue to work with you on how to manage or maybe deal with a clientele that is destructive. I think you're coming to that awareness, unfortunately, that sometimes that just isn't going to be a mutually benefiting agreement, so I appreciate your proactive stance on that. And, you know, I, it's never an easy thing to ask for additional funds for the projects, but given what your requests are, I do support this, and I do support reallocating that $68,000 for additional projects because of the savings. But with that, I will say, we need to take a really proactive stance to advocate for funds. If the community and the state at large knew how many dollars are being held in transition when there are children that are homeless getting on school buses at homeless centers, we should be outraged.
You know, I-
Yes, Commissioner Campbell.
More good comments, and I share those comments. I, you know, I, I'm a little concerned, I was more concerned not so much with your financial request today, but with that five-year goal. And I, there was an item on there that, quite frankly, really concerns me. And I look across the river, and I see where two similar-type buildings over the last few years have been taken down, and they've been taken down because they were that, they were old and just not worthy of being redone. I, you know, I would encourage, and a lot of that was done not with local dollars, and what's nice about it is where those are going down, you can, it's something new is coming back up that's supposed to also still help, and I would encourage, you know, every effort being made to, you know, compare the cost of remodeling that thing to looking at what, and I think it was the Housing Authority on the Fargo side that did that, and how they were able to obtain those funds to get rid of an old thing that, quite frankly, I think it's going to be hard to make that thing last another 50 years. So, but that's, anyway, I'm-
Chair Ambigur.
I just think that that's something that should be seriously looked at.
Chair Ambigur, Commissioner Campbell, I just want you to know that as tenants at the Family Service Center, there are more fundamental issues with that building than there are with the high-rise. I can assure you, having office'd in both locations, that there are ongoing issues, even though there have been significant investments made into that. We have analyzed those issues, because I agree with you completely, there's no use of throwing good money into bad, and although it might not be the most attractive building at this time, its bones are good. We are not in the same position as the Fargo HRA was, in that they were able to convince HUD that it was no longer a usable building. We would not be in that position because all of our internal, and Dawn is going to be an expert at this compared to me, but our boilers are new, our elevators are new, our water risers are new. It's the bones that are new, and because of those funds that we're waiting for to get released by the state, we are hoping to do another $6 million towards windows and doors. But we're really down to windows and doors and facade, and so we hear your concerns. We've had engineers in there, we've had architects in there, and we will have this ongoing conversation over the next five years to see where we can get that. But I hear and understand what you're saying about old buildings in the Family Service Center and the Fargo high-rise, but this property is not in that same condition. But we are looking at every option, including repurposing that land and looking for some revenue-generating opportunities. And I would also just say that the federal government, as much as the state, as far as what we're waiting for, to get some funds out the door, so.
Commissioner Kravonoff.
I just, and maybe it was a lie, maybe you just answered it, but I was wondering, you have a state coalition you work with?
Yes.
And what's the name of that?
The National Association of Housing and Redevelopment Officials, otherwise known as Minnesota NARO.
Okay, thank you, because I didn't want to say it.
[laughing].
So anyway, I'm just, is this, tell us what's going on to Commissioner Mojo's point. What is that group doing? What are other groups doing to try to help them move? I mean, they're certainly aware, correct?
Chair, Commissioner Kravonoff, yes. I am the immediate past president of Minnesota NARO and the co-legislative chair of that entity, and we have advocated strongly for more federal and state involvement with these programs, particularly the ongoing support of the public housing entities that were created by the federal government. Senator Smith is introducing legislation this week regarding fully funding the outstanding backlogs of capital needs of these types of projects, and we can continue to educate on this issue and encourage those resources to be made available. As we all know, there's a nationwide housing crisis at this point.
Well, the federal piece, I kind of get that, but I'm going back to the billion dollars. Who do we yell at for that?
I can assure you, the governor's office has been yelling, primarily at Minnesota Housing and the Department of Human Services. We have been actively engaged with that process and have Minnesota housing officials coming to the, this conference we'll be at, and we will continue to reiterate that message statewide. Once again, the primary funding is from the federal and state dollars. This is why, as Commissioner Mojo pointed out, our request is relatively light compared to most housing authorities, and they're requesting 18% of our maximum, and the statewide average is 58%, because they're all looking for some type of a local buy-in to go along with these state and federal funds.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? We do have a motion on the floor. No further discussion. This motion will be in reference to the motion to approve the Housing and Redevelopment Authority of Clay County levy and collect a special benefit tax of $300,000. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes.
Mr. Chair, in regards to the $68,000 in 2025 SAHA funds, those were never previously directed, were they? Were they, Steve?
Now, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Campbell, you are correct. I think that the request that is, we've talked about two different things. I think the request that is brought forward by the HRA is to reallocate $40,414.13. The $68,698 will most likely come out in an RFP in the future.
Okay, that's what I, because that's what I was saying, that $68,000 would need to be through an RFP.
Correct.
So, but that $40,000, that's just kind of redirecting the use. That's- So, but that $40,000, that's just kind of redirecting the use. That's previously been approved.
Correct.
I would make that motion.
I'll second that.
Have a motion second. Discussion. If no discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. I do appreciate airing, that you aired an aside of caution, bringing this last item to our attention. It's things like that that develop the kind of trust we're going to need here, particularly when we look to five year plan, if we're going to move through that together. So I do appreciate that.
And Chair, we do appreciate all of you and your interest in this and are looking forward to those future conversations that impact a lot of residents of Clay County.
Thank you. Next up, Darren Brooks, RHR Director, request approval to purchase the UKG recruiting and onboard modules to increase the efficiency and effectiveness of applicant tracking and onboarding procedures for Clay County. Save you all that.
Thank you. That was a long title. Well, thanks for having me. Thanks Frank for coming and listening to my, after your near death experience. I know this is what you really wanted to hear, so that's why you're here today.
Why I came back.
Maybe after my presentation, you might not be so happy, but, all right. So, as you know, in, in 2022, we implemented our new UKG HR payroll system. And that has helped a lot in automating our, our services that we provide to the, to the employees. But in the last 12 years, I've been here 13, in the last 12 years, we've gone from 452 employees to 687 employees. And in that time, I've added one half, a halftime, part-time position to my department. And last year, we received 799 applications and we hired 181 employees, which is pretty typical for, for our department. And in that time, we've kind of had a patchwork of, of solutions to get people recruited, get people in processed. And so my request today is to purchase a module that is a recruiting and onboard module that fits right into our, it's a UKG product. And I'll go through here in a minute what that will help us with. Right now, we use multiple things to manage the personnel actions within HR. We use Jot Form for applications and Seamless Docs for other forms. We use RT Vision for time management. We have App Extender for file management. We use Adobe for some other forms. We use SharePoint for application storage and, and so that departments can, department heads can get into the applications and look at them. And, and the way things have gone in the last several years in the HR world, there's been so many things that have been added to our plate that we have to do. Some of those, including earned safe and sick time, that you know, we had a very difficult time implementing last year. The Affordable Care Act, you don't hear about that too much, but it's still something that we have to track. New union regulations and administrative things that we have to do based on the legislation that passed the last year. Parental leave, Pregnant Workers Fairness Act, work comp and FMA claims have all gone up. And the one that worries me the most is in 2026, the Minnesota Paid Family Medical Leave Act, which goes into, into effect in 2026, which I think is going to be very difficult to track that program. So with all of that being said, what will this, these two new modules do for us? So what it does is it tracks the applications and it makes job postings and it posts things out to job, pre-selected job boards all at the same time. So we don't have to keep going to different websites and posting our job. We, we post them now right on our website, but we also go to other websites and post them. This will post them throughout with one job posting. It allows the department heads and supervisors to see the applications right away. It, they get notifications when an application comes in. It tracks the progress of the applicant through the process. So if it's been, if they've been reviewed, if they've been interviewed, if they've been notified, it has templated letters in there that we can send for people that aren't selected. So that, that helps out a lot. It allows the applicants to store their application. So right now, every time a person applies for a job, they have to fill out a whole nother application. Some people don't like to do that. With this, they have a sign in, they fill out their application once, and then they can apply that application to different job openings. It allows us to do screening questions. So if somebody is not, let's say a job requires a CDL or the job requires a, a male applicant, sometimes in our correctional facility, we have hires males or females, we can use a screening question to screen out the people that aren't qualified for that. And that's just a small example of what we can do with that. It also automates our whole process. Basically, the, it goes from the application, the applicant fills out the application. If, once they're selected, interview is selected, all that information goes right into our HR payroll system. So there's less likelihood of typing errors or entry errors. So that, that definitely cuts down on our, on our time as well. It also allows human resources to send the applicant their hire paper, paperwork, their new, new hire paperwork, their W4s, their I9s and all that, so that it's already filled out. And we can track the progress of the new, new applicant or new employee of filling out that paperwork so that it's done and completed by the time they come for in processing with human resources on their first day of, of employment. And it also stores our job postings and our job descriptions within the system. So we don't have Word documents, PDFs and, and all of that. It will all be in one, one location. I think the reason I'm asking for this is we've gotten to the point where we're just getting too big and not enough people. And I think we've patchworked everything together as long as possible. We are a big county now and I think our, our HR department is still pretty lean when it, when you're talking 675 people. We're only getting bigger and bigger. And I think that I'm hoping that, you know, by doing this, we can cut down on having to hire another person, which, you know, if we were just to hire an HR generalist, you know, you're talking 89, $90,000. The, the cost of this solution for us is 94, $9,450 for an implementation cost. And then it's about $12,000, $12,156 per year after that. So a little over $1,000 a month. Some of the funding sources that I have for that or funding recommendations, because I don't have all of that money. We did save some money on the market study. I budgeted $25,000 for that and, and that, that came to $18,675. We did have a pick meeting that we discussed all of this and it was recommended to bring this to the ARPA committee. And then the ARPA committee met yesterday and also recommended that I bring this straight to the full board. So that's why I'm here today. Some of the other funds would be the, using some of the ARPA funds to pay for that. IT has already obligated $10,000 to pay for the implementation fund. It will take about 60 to 90 days to implement this. And I'm hoping to do this right away so that we can get, get it all in place, hopefully before the turn of the new year. And then also, if we do this, we would get rid of Seamless Docs, which is another one of our forms programs. And that we, that contract goes through August of 2025, and that's about $9,000 per year as well. I also get funds, or I don't, but it goes into the general funds of our performance improvement plan. And that's approximately $9,500 per year that we get from the state at the end of the, at the end of the year from the report that I submit in June. And that has been continuing for the last probably 10, 10 years or so. So that is my request to the board today. And I'm open for any questions.
Questions. Commissioner Campbell.
Mr. Chair, yeah, so this did go to the pick committee, which I sat in for, for Commissioner Grossman. And the, the pick committee had recommended that it go to the ARPA committee for the potential use of the remaining ARPA funds. ARPA did meet yesterday and, and the ARPA committee's recommendation is, is to use the $12,000 for implementation through the ARPA, remaining ARPA dollars. And so now, so you have the $9,400, that's, that's a hard caught, one time cost, right?
Correct. The
And that's, and that's where the IT money comes from, that $10,000?
Yes, I talked to Rory already. He has $10,000 in his budget that he can put towards that implementation cost. So anything as far as if we were to use ARPA funds or something would come out, would be the ongoing costs for next year.
So that $12,000 would be basically for the year 2025?
Yes.
Or, which, after that, of course, then it would have to, we would no longer have the ARPA money, but it would be an ongoing
Right. I would just put that in my budget from there on out.
And, and I think Mr. Mr. Chair Commissioners is that, that contract that Darren has through Seamless Docs ends next August. And so for the budget process for 2026, realistically, we'd be needing $3,000.
It'd be, yeah, right. Because one would go away.
Right.
Yeah, actually, that, that Seamless Docs money is in Mark Sloan's budget. So.
So, first I have, Commissioner Campbell is, the, what's the remaining amount right now in ARPA?
So we have, could give you that.
We're gonna
It's on the agenda for next.
Yeah, we're gonna
Right after me.
We're gonna talk about that.
Yeah, we're gonna be talking about, so, so right, right now, before, and there's some other things that we're talking about today, but right now, there's about $144,000 that's available. And ARPA's got other recommendations that we're talking about later. But of that 144, 12 is, is this.
Okay. So I'm, Dylan, what's just a curious question, but number two, you're, if this is appropriate time, you feel that is a good place for this first?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay. And then the other question may be for Darren or whoever knows. It's the annual subscription, obviously.
Correct.
And at this rate, at the, how long is that subscription you're for?
For one year.
One year?
Yeah.
And then you, you find out sometime what their increases are as they go along?
Yes. Yeah, they base it on how many employees we have. So, but yes, well, I will find, I would find out what the cost would be for the following year.
And then I'm assuming over time, you know, this is a good, a good program, there'll be also new software that comes out from time to time?
Yeah, this, this is all would be cloud based. So we would, we wouldn't be having the server here. This is all through, this would basically merge right into our HR payroll system that we currently
Okay.
So
And where I'm coming back on that is not holding you to it. At some point, there, will there be other types of implementation costs?
I don't foresee that
Okay.
At this point. As with our HR payroll system, they will put out updates or fixes or whatever. And that, that's no cost to us at this point.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, if there's no further questions, I would move that we authorize $12,156 to cover the implementation for one year by using the ARPA, available ARPA funds.
Second the motion.
That includes the approval to purchase the system, the UKG system?
Yes, that, but that, that's not ARPA funds.
That would come out of IT's
We'll have a second motion.
Well, they, yeah, so, yes, this one, this one is just the delegation of the ARPA funds. That's what this motion is.
Okay, so we'll, we'll limit this motion to the ARPA funds. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
Do we need a motion for the IT?
Yes. For the approval to purchase the UKG recruiting and onboard module for HR.
Mr. Chair, make that motion using the available IT funds as, as suggested.
I'll second that.
Motion second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Thanks, Darren. Next up, request approval to designate remaining ARPA funds for the 200, or 2025 budget. And Steve Larson, our county administrator.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. As we've transitioned into this discussion, just a kind of, just a little bit of feedback. Through the, through the COVID pandemic, the county received, through the ARPA funds, received $12,474,370, excuse me, $12,474,372 in two allocations earlier. This, this board assigned a committee to, to look at the funding and requests that came forward and additional ideas to bring forward to this board for recommendations. We are to the point, as through this process, that, that designation of the ARPA funds have to be done by December 31st, 2024 and spent, apologize for the error in the memo, but spent by December 31st, 2026. As was mentioned, through this point, the, the ARPA fund has $144,773 remaining. We also have $25,000 that is still under consideration. As you may recall, this board approved $25,000 for Red River Communication Border to Border Grant. I spoke with Red River Communications yesterday and they've still not heard whether or not, whether or not they've received, will receive those funds. And so with that, the, the remaining dollars, as was mentioned, is $144,733 with the board's previous action. That took that down to $132,577. If you recall, when the US Treasury came out with the rules, the, there was a standard allowance, a one-time standard allowance, which allowed the county, cities, townships up to $10 million in revenue loss regardless of utilizing the complicated structure of showing loss. And so as long as it was spent on governmental services and also for the auditor simplified reporting. This board with that has still followed the true nature and true intent of, of the spending. And so the request before you of utilizing the 132,577 would be appropriate. I did hand out in some of our discussions that we talked about in our budget update last week on our, our new requests, this document that's before you shows that what we'd be looking to allocate is $98,187 to a victim witness advocate. That, that position has been funded previously by ARPA and we would be just requesting that it be covered, or that would cover some of those, the cost this year. And also, it would also cover $20,000 within Kathy McKay's budget for vaccine that's no longer being covered by state government. And that would leave an additional $14,390 to apply towards the levy. And so with that, I would yield for any questions.
Questions. Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, thank you. You know, just to, reconfirming the discussion of the ARPA group yesterday, you know, going to Commissioner Kravonov's questions, we have $20,000 that we still want to keep in there for public health, for the vaccine issue, the restorative justice, as Steve mentioned. That was actually covered by ARPA funds for 2024 and I think 2023. And so this would be a good use of those And so this would be a good use of those funds moving into 2025, and that would actually then be able to take away, take off of our levy. And then, the 12,000 that we just did. And so then, as Steve mentioned, that would bring us down to 14,586 dollars, roughly that amount. And I think that what we talked about is, whatever that amount, some of these things are going to be slightly different by the time you actually pay for them. But I think what the ARPA committee suggested, then whatever balance is remaining by 1231, that that would, that would go just into our general fund for the purpose of reducing the levy. And that would include, if Red River Communications, if that grant is not awarded, that 25,000 would also then be able to be transferred over to pay down the levy. So we'd be looking at anywhere from 39,500 to 14,000, somewhere in that number that would be additional amounts that we, well, actually, the 98,000 also reduces our levy. So.
Additional questions?
Got one question. You said the 20,000 you want to keep in ARPA funds. I thought we had to spend all the ARPA funds.
Well, Commissioner Gross, I think the ARPA funds have to be spent by the end of 2026.
Oh, excuse me.
I think we, I think we need to allocate the funds by the end of 2024.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Other questions? Or motion?
Mr. Chair, I would, I would, I would move that we designate the, I'm gonna do this by, I'm gonna, I would move that we designate the 20,000 remaining ARPA funds to public health for vaccines, that we designate 98,187 dollars from ARPA to restorative justice. And we've already taken action on the 12,000. And so that any remaining money that is left be designated towards the general fund.
Okay.
Second.
Motion second, discussion on the motion.
And that would meet our requirement to fully have all of those ARPA dollars designated by December 31.
Any further discussion? Now, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion passes. You're up next, Steve, for the.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. And if I, if I could, just make a quick note, I just wanted to thank the commission for their guidance over the last, ironically, it was four years and two months since we met the first day yesterday. I also want to thank the board, it's part of your packet, you see the many things that you approved and the impacts that you made with those COVID dollars. I think that having that committee to review and look at the best ways to provide that, those funds, I know that it was important to make sure that, you know, the different business, the business, multiple business, funding opportunities that were provided when businesses were shut short or closed, when we had different entities within our communities that were struggling, we were able to meet to allocate those. So I appreciate, appreciate the guidance and the direction from the board, and also appreciate our committee members. We are hoping that that was our last meeting. There may be some cleanup that we have to do, but again, I appreciate the board's commitment to that. The committees assign that, so, thank you. The last item is just a cleanup action from May 7. If you recall, Greg Strohman from the Clay County Trailblazers Snowmobile Club came forward and provided an update on the season that wasn't last year, but also came forward with Resolution 2420, 24, 2024-17, allowing us to continue to act as a legal sponsor for their snowmobile club for the next season. On August 15, Mr. Strohman and I met with representatives of the DNR, who are reviewing their programs as a whole. And one of the things that Trailblazers Snowmobile Club does is, for where the map is each year that's utilized for the trail, they get permissions for right-of-way from the citizens of that property. And we, they've processed that, but we had nowhere in our agreement that stated that they were doing that on your behalf as a board, as through the sponsorship. And so, when you turn over to the Resolution 24-25, the addition from what you approved earlier this year is, be it further resolved that Clay County, as a legal sponsor, grants the authority to the Clay Trail Alliance Snowmobile Club to obtain landowner permission in the name of the club and sponsor. And then they keep that on files for the DNR. With that, I'd yield for any questions.
Questions for Steve? Or motion?
Allow for a motion to approve Resolution 2024-25.
Second.
Have motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
Thank you. I did review, review this with Mr. Melton, it doesn't have any additional liability.
Okay, we'll move on to committee reports. And ironically enough, we're going to start with Commissioner Gross. It's your turn.
You want to hear the whole report? I'm going to stick with, glad to be back.
It's good to have you back. Thank you. Commissioner Kravonoff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So last Tuesday afternoon, we had our quarterly meeting of the Clay County Library. And with the number of cases coming in, revenues keep going up, and they have a balance of about 82,000 at this point. And with that amount, I know some of it is being worked on, getting tablets for people in court, there's still some work to be done with that. And as far as the legal library itself, it's constantly being looked at, what's relevant, what are the things that can be discarded? And so what, with the extra funds seem to be getting a little higher, we're going to meet next month in the library itself to kind of look at what maybe inside could be repurposed, be used for people coming in the library in a better way, and with more efficiencies. So anyway, the number of people coming in for the legal check-in is steady, and I believe it was about 45 people that came in, mostly for regarding family law, getting help at the legal clinic check-ins that they have down in the library. Let's see, then we moved Thursday, September 5. That day started out with our Clay County Intergovernmental Committee. This committee includes cities, township, representatives from cities, townships, and school districts, county commission, and I guess that's it. Always a great discussion to have. We did have Dan Farnsworth from Metro Cog come and give us an update on the Heartland Trail Study, mainly about potential from their open houses and getting citizen input, mainly from the area of Holly into, into Moorhead, although that trail will go all the way to Detroit Lakes. That was part of it. Then we talked a little bit what will be ideas for our retreat in January, and three items mainly came up about opioids, that discussion, helping the reduction and prevention. And then, Heartland Trail was also discussed, maybe have an update on that, and then certainly, hopefully, be joined in with some legislative updates with our legislators that can attend. With that, Commissioner Campbell was at the meeting, maybe has a couple more things to add. Later that morning, I had my monthly Children's Mental Health monthly meeting, very good discussion there, full group, we heard a lot from Lakeland Mental Health, they were very active in the discussion, but mainly it was agencies reporting with one another, the things that are going on, what they're very, think they're having good successes with, and areas with the state that are still problematic and trying to keep up with the needs of mental health. It was a pretty broad discussion all over, so that discussion I did bring up about the PRTF and the steps that were taken as a, as a board in maybe the repurposing of juvenile, and then also into a PRTRF, and then that future of a potential unsecured for women's building being built. Right after that, I had the Family Resource Center core team. Again, this is moving along with the grant that the FRC received for planning through the Sauer Foundation, where they're, and this will go through November, these meetings. And the point they're at right now is creating a family advisory board, and so they set up the guidelines for people that want to throw their name in the hat to see if they want to be part of this nine-member board. People on the board will be from a broad spectrum, to keep that, knowing that any type work that this resource center would do would be for all families, so just making sure it's spread out to work throughout the county. Then, toward the end of the day, I had the, it'd be our quarterly Clay County Collaborative Meeting. Right now, our coordinator is considering, kind of walking away from this job, so we're going to be opening up a search for a new coordinator. But in the meantime, Marissa wants to hold on to the work, she really doesn't want to leave without any transition plan for the new person that might come in, whenever that is, so it's not like she has an exact end date, but she wants us to be working toward that. So at the same time, there will be a four-member group here that'll start, two from the governance, two from the admin group, and will not only start the search process, but will also, what transition-type things can we do to make this job more effective and efficient? But as far as the work we do in the collaborative, it's tremendous. You know, large number of grants, 439,000 in grants went out this year. We found out through some internal auditing work that we have a sizable fund, there's probably somewhere close to 350,000 dollars left in that fund. So how can we utilize those funds over a period of time? So it was a much bigger number we had in our account than I think anybody expected a year ago, so we want to be prudent with that and make sure those funds are being used in useful ways, which they always are, but, you know, also making sure that we're maximizing the potential for not only the groups we have applying for funds at this point, but maybe even get some more people involved. And the next day, it was an honor, I will say that on Friday, it was fun going to our past assistant attorney, and for the legislature of Mike Leiser, and seeing him becoming a judge. And it was special. And he was there with his family and two active young lady girls, especially the one-and-a-half-year-old. She was the, kind of the star of the program. But anyway, it was fun, it was really, I just am very grateful and respectful of all the work that Mike did for the county, his past, the stories with him, you know, and his, which I didn't know about, we had a, David Paul spoke, who was Executive Secretary of the Board of Judicial Standards, he's retired, but Mike worked with him for several years, and that's really your ethics committee of the judicial system in Minnesota. And with that background, obviously, that elevated Mike to this position very well. Anyway, we'll have, he's got big shoes, or the next person has big shoes to fill, and I'm sure Attorney Melton will take care of that and seeing that's done well. But anyway, it was a pleasure being part of that, and all the best to Mike, as being a judge, serving our 7th District in Clay County, so even gets to be in town still. Yesterday on Monday, had a couple of things, through the Cast Clay Food Partners, we had a food forest event out at MB Park, Johnson Park. I was there for about an hour, went from 4 till 7 in my hour that I was out there. There was roughly, I'd say around 40 people. It was interesting to hear about their planning of a food forest. It involved three berry gardens, and then also 138 apple trees, and, or no, trees, excuse me, of which two of them are plum, and two are pear, and the rest are apples, 10 different varieties. So for our public, go out there anytime, it's all open to the public, if there's fruit, you can take the fruit, you know, enjoy it, taste a little, but it's for the community to share. And also, they'll be doing education along with that over the years. And then last night, I was at the Buffalo Red Watershed District, things of note there. John Hanson, who had been on the board for many, many years, did not choose to work for, come in for another term. So Becker County now has appointed Tom Andreessen, or Todd, I hope I said that, Todd Andreessen, he's a grain farmer, cow calf operator up just north of Detroit Lakes, toward the Callaway area. So he was very, for first night, he was, spoke quite a bit, and asked good questions. As far as permits, we had three drain tiles, one in Clay, one in Woken, one in Otter Tail. As far as local projects in Clay County, I'll just say that we have the Stony Creek restoration, the work has been completed, there's still some final work needing to be done as far as grass seeding, that type thing. Also, the Glendon East Tributary on the east side, going south of Glendon, that one in the same spot, work is completed, and just, again, getting that grass down as quickly as we can this fall. And then last, I want to report is on the Snaky Creek, over by on 11th Street, just north of the cemetery going down there. They have about two weeks left of that work. So all these three projects that were near us, the Maud Area to Glendon, are being completed. The last thing, which has always been a discussion here, especially since two years ago when we had that heavy flood, that area of the restoration of the Whiskey Creek, starting at Barnesville, going up, as you will, toward County Road 20, that area, south of Baker, that continues on. Anyway, that area in there did go through its EAW, that was completed, and no issues found, so that, that leads the way. So they, in fact, did approve the AIS, and so we're in good shape to move forward with the work. And they, I think they're pursuing the bids. So that completes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Mojo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week, I was a poor excuse for subbing in for Commissioner Gross at the Highway Tracking Committee. We did have updates in regards to the transmission that went out on a blade, pretty substantial cost, but grateful that it didn't happen during the winter season. We did have an update on staffing, there's some internal movement. Also, we'll be advertising for applicants for a few positions within the Highway Department. Also, we'll be advertising for applicants for a few positions within the Highway Department. The five-year-plan meeting will be September 24th here at 9:00 a.m. Projects will remain the same as they've been communicated, there's just some updates to cost. We discussed the lease numbers for the 2025 pickups, we'll be reviewing that and bringing forward a recommendation. Updates on the CASA-10 box culvert and CASA-26 paving update and striping. There are a couple box culverts that are remaining on there, and they were able to get County Road 51 Bridge funding approved. Did have a discussion about the stated Highway 12 and 52 open house in regards to the open house, or the roundabout construction that will be needing to happen soon, targeting a late September meeting at the Highway Department, but also felt because of commuter traffic, it would be helpful to have a meeting either in the Saban City Council or Barnesville City Council. That information will come forward at a later date. I attended the AMC Subcommittee on Taxes and State-Assessed Properties, and I've been appointed, I have been appointed to that committee. We did talk about the local sales tax discussions statewide, and was able to update how Clay County has utilized and leveraged those funds for projects. We did have a Department of Revenue presentation and a gross operating receipts, had perspectives from a couple different counties on their county program. Aid Ramsey County and La Quaparl County were able to give their insight, and did have a next steps planning. It was really interesting to see the wide representation on that committee from all areas of the state. There are a couple counties that are in such dire straits financially, they are seeking advice on declaring bankruptcy as a county, so there are huge implications in how the state assesses some properties, particularly state-owned and utility properties, but also we're just, there are so many state unfunded mandates, you know, a lot of counties are in really difficult positions, so I appreciate that while it may seem we're being critical, it is really important that we maintain vigilance in regards to taxes. It's a burden, but we're also able to utilize some great things with it as well. The next day, I attended the Red River Basin Commission meeting that was held in Moorhead. It was the annual ex officio joint meeting with the Basin Commission. Did have an update from Melinda Behrens from the National Weather Service in regards to the 2024, 2025 winter outlook. It appears it will have a mild and warm fall, followed by a wet and cold winter. Hopefully, that's not true on the lighter, but I'll go for the mild fall. We did have then an update from Darryl Richardson on the North Dakota ND Dawn improvements, and really, it's the radar and the reporting in North Dakota, and hell, that's also been mirrored in Minnesota. It's really quite a fantastic update on that. It's helpful as you do planning, but also estimates for precipitation. We had an update from Chris Bakigard on the FM Area Diversion Project update. I reiterated to the group, since there were Minnesota legislators and Minnesota agency representatives from Minnesota, how important it will continue to be to advocate for funding. That project will not be certifiable until the Minnesota components are complete, and the North Dakota representatives, particularly Commissioner Shirlene and Commissioner Pepcorn, were grateful that I presented that component, but certainly will take a group effort to continue to lobby for that. We had an update on the Netley-Lebu Marsh Restoration Project. We've heard so many projects, updates on that, up on the south area of Lake Winnipeg, I believe. Really fascinating to hear how that delta has really gone away, and sediment has really been an issue, and it's, now they're restoring that, and so they're able to have some netting and components in there to get that sediment to fall there again, so a cool update on that. Then an update on Minnesota-North Dakota Soil Health Partnership. I believe that concludes that report. Yesterday, I attended the MetroCog Executive Committee meeting. We did general business and approval of the ATAC Moorhead Agreement on their project that was approved, and reviewed the draft financial audit, and had agency updates. We will need to have a special meeting in September to approve proposals. And then did talk, there was a reduction in the ask for some agencies for next year. We did see about a $30,000 reduction in that ask. There's a slowdown in projects, and so they're, they're working really hard to utilize all the CPG funding that they were able to get, hopeful that they can work through that, but it's looking like there's just a slowdown of projects, so that is why, see the reduction there. Sorry. Then yesterday, I also attended the Withdrawal Management Detox Facility Construction Update. We did have a good update on the progression there. They have completed the exterior components on that, they're working on concrete and dirtwork, landscaping. We did have a couple proposal requests, which would be several additions or deductions in the cost, or due to some savings. There was a coiling door upgrade fund there, and we're waiting on the card reader revisions. There was a discussion on TV brackets, I believe staff was able to work through that, and discussed owner transition plan. We'll have the FM Extra, we'll be walking through the week of the 16th, which is also, I believe, the week that you're updating to the Moorhead Business Association, that piece, and then our groundbreaking, not groundbreaking, ribbon cutting and media day will be on October 1st. And I think we're looking at having one more meeting there, and then we'll be able to wrap that up. And then we moved into the DMV discussion for the construction. Mason Mortonry, Mortonson Masonry completed all the brick on the building, working on the monument sign, they installed the countertops, and same thing there, they're working on Let's see. And the transition plan there, too. There was a discussion on the iPad station for the kiosk, I believe the staff is working on that. In regards to contingencies on both projects, about 191,000 remaining in the contingency on the Withdrawal Management Facility, and about $206,000 remaining on the contingency there. We're certainly not anticipating drying down those substantially, so that's good to see. There will be some components as we finish up that will need to come out of that. And I don't believe I updated on the access management for the field approach, that was approved and will move forward. I believe that concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell.
Thank you. On September 3rd, I also attended the Highway Tracking Committee meeting, which Commissioner Mojo gave a very good report on. The only thing that I would add to that is we did have a conversation with Justin about, if you recall, in his budget request, there was the $400,000 that was, that had been being paid to the city of Moorhead for many years for a turnback project. The last payment on that was in 2024, so 2025, he wanted to use that $400,000 to go towards striping projects and those types of things. And we talked to him about reducing that from 400 to 325, and that $75,000 would go towards his budget to, I can't remember if it was, Steve, was it a new request?
New maintenance worker.
Yeah, the new maintenance worker, so that, so that $75,000 would fund that the first year. Keep in mind, that would still give him $325,000 that he didn't have before, to be able to do, do some of that work. He did mention something that he still might have some other areas within his budget that could make up and still allow some additional things to be done, so. So we had that conversation with him. And then on the September 5th, I had the Intergovernmental Committee, which Commissioner Krabinoff reported on, and I really have nothing to add to that report. Yesterday, we had our, as Commissioner Mojo mentioned, we had our, both the detox construction update and the motor vehicle update. I want to just point out one thing, that on the contingencies, the 191,000 that we had there, we did, we did authorize through Joel Olson's request on that, on the mower, I believe that was 15, about $15,000 that that, come from that project, that project pay for it. It really didn't impact this, so to speak, but it was because it was an FFNE issue, his FFNE went up, which means we still have to take it from that contingency. So rather than the 191, it would probably be about 175, or somewhere in that area. But other than that, Commissioner Mojo, I don't really have anything to add. Everybody that's, was at the same committee as I did, and they give good reports, so I can just be quiet.
Well, I forgot to report on the ARPA, so.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay. Oh, yeah, I got that over here. So we have the ARPA committee, and we acted on all that stuff, so I have no further report.
Perfect.
Okay, well, I'm going to be short and sweet, I have one meeting. On the 5th, the Minnesota Safe and Secure Courts Advisory Panel that I'm on, representing AMC Public Safety Committee, we met virtually with Judge Cochran, Jennifer Super from Minnesota Judicial Branch, and all the applications are in, 25 of them, from 22 different counties. Scott County has three separate applications for grant funding for secure courts. So we have a total of $840,000 in requests, and we have $500,000 in appropriations. So we're getting to work on the, reading these grants and holding it up on the standards for application, and by the end of September, we hope to meet with an idea to get all the grants read by all the participants and the score sheets figured out by the beginning of November. And so that is going to be an ongoing process, and it's kind of daunting, but I'll put my reading glasses on and get to work. And other than that, I have nothing else. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week, I participated in Highway Tracking. It's been well-covered. I think just the only other point, and maybe I missed it, Justin's going to be coming forward with the five-year-plan to a public hearing during this board meeting on September 24th. I met that afternoon, met with Commissioner Krabinoff on a series of county issues. On the 4th, we had our Strive for Excellence meeting. We have several employees that are going through the NACO High Performance Leadership Training. The second cohort group started this week, so we had some discussions on that. We're going to have a wrap-up or a follow-up at the end of December, when the last group goes through, to kind of process that whole, the whole training piece. One of the requests that came forward is, in the discussion is, we used to have an at-your-service customer service training, and there's been some discussion from our department heads that that would also be beneficial to bring back. And then we also talked about our interdepartment retreat that we're looking to host sometime this spring for, within the county. On the 4th, I met with Mr. Melton, Joel Olson, and Corey Bang in regards to the Red River, or excuse me, the resource recovery door issue that we're having. We did send a letter to construction engineers, Clint McCarthy, to encourage some move forward movement on that, as we've been having issues with our doors out there for roughly two years. Clay County Intergovernmental Committee, that's been, on the 5th, that has been addressed, also participated on that afternoon with Jill Sturmeyer, that Matt Jacobson and I are going to be part of a panel committee talking about our cannabis ordinance at the AMC Conference on Wednesday morning, and so just went through some of that process. On the 5th, also talked to Sheriff Empting on a series of issues. On the 6th, I met with Dan Molly, Derek LaPointe. They're, they're going to be starting the remodel of City Hall, and so administration is moving over to the MCOM Center, with the other departments moving over to the old US Bank building this week. And so one of the things we, we talked budgets, we talked about legislative priorities, again, they're hoping to, that we'll can have some sort of meeting here this November to make sure that we're on the same page moving forward with flood mitigation funding. They're also focusing some additional work on border legislation. Participated in a NACO leadership training on the 6th, also was also present at Judge Leiser's investiture. Yesterday, participated in the owners' meeting, and also the ARPA meeting, that have been well-covered. And then I was invited to the MetroCog 2026-2030 Transit Development Plan Study Committee. I'm not sure if I'm the right person to be at that, that meeting, but I appreciated the invite. I talked about, looking about what are the future needs as far as the Fargo-Moorhead area. They talked about 1.3 million riders annually of our bus systems. We've seen a consistent rise in usage in the bus, even as the service hours went down during COVID, with the largest, the busiest part of the day, of course, is the noon hour, and then also the busiest day of usage is actually Saturday. So they hope to have a draft of this, this thing, this, excuse me, study review by June 2025, but they'll be looking at some public, for some public input starting here in September. And so I just want to, last thing, I guess, is the, is the follow-up from, from last week's budget discussion. A number of recommendations were brought forward that you requested that Ms. Johnson and I look at. We also went back and made those adjustments based on your actions today with the ARPA funds. We also had, had some additional savings with the market study, in market study implementation. Social Services receives some additional, receives partial funding in some of their positions. That was roughly over $80,000 additional savings that we would get through reimbursement. And then the figures for the tax abatement numbers came in, about $100,000 lower than anticipated. And so with the board's approval, next week, next week, Ms. Johnson and I would be bringing forward a resolution to establish a preliminary levy, and allowing Ms. Johnson to meet the certified requirement of statute with a, with a net levy, give or take a tenth of a percentage of 4.19%, so we were able to lower it, lower it just about, just about three levy points from, from the presentation. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Ms. Melton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just thought I would highlight, I know as you're aware, in the consent agenda today, there was an item from the Crime Victim Services, where the Minnesota Office of Justice Programs had an amendment where our grant, one of our grants within the Victim Services, Crime Victim Services, went from 70,000 up to 80,154, and so it's not a humongous sum, but an increase of $10,000, and so I appreciate that both the state and then the county, you know, signing off on that, and that money will go and be well-used to help service victims within the county. Obviously, one of my main roles and main roles of our office is holding offenders accountable, but second to that is also making sure that victims are well-served, well-treated, understand the system, and are working to make them as whole as possible when they unfortunately have become victims of crimes. And so I think some of this money will mainly go toward some of that after, you know, post- adjudication, helping to find out if those victims need any other services, or if there's any other things left that they need assistance with. And so, again, I appreciate the state approving some additional funds and the county signing off on it.
Very good, thank you. That is a critical part of the criminal justice system that a lot of people don't think of, but once the case is solved and adjudicated, there's still people who have to live with the results of what's happened for years, and it's good that we've got some additional funding in there to try to mediate some of the issues that they've got to deal with. Hey, Aaron, anything? Jackie?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As Commissioner Mojo mentioned, on the October 1st, we have the Withdrawal Management Detox Facility and DMV Open House and Ribbon Cutting. We will be getting invites sent out this week, so we're looking forward to that event.
Very good. Commissioner Campbell.
Yeah, I just wanted to, going back to the Intergovernmental Retreat, for those who may not have that on their calendars, the retreat's date is scheduled for January 31st with a weather date of February 7th. Ezra, you might want to make sure you note that in your calendar moving forward, that, that those are the scheduled dates of that.
Anyone have any additional? If not, we're adjourned. Thank you.